Again, good afternoon. And thank you for joining us this afternoon. On behalf of the Standing Committee on Executive Appointment and Government Investigation, we would like to welcome Governor Torres' representative, Mr. Jason Palacios, along with I'm Shai, the appointee, Mr. Jesus I. Sablon, dignitaries, and members of the general public. Before we proceed forward with this public hearing, let me first introduce the members of this standing committee. To my immediate right is the vice chairman of this committee, Senator Victor B. Hokuk from the 1st Senatorial District, Rota. And to my right side of the aisle is the floor leader of the Senate, Senator Venus Sablon from the 3rd Senatorial District, Saipan. And next to him is Senator Carl King Neighbors from the 2nd Senatorial District, Tinian. And to my left side of the aisle is the vice president and the acting president at the moment is Senator Hustu Kidugwa from the 3rd Senatorial District, Saipan. And I'm the chairman of this committee, Senator Francisco Q. Cruz from the 2nd Senatorial District, Tinian. I would also like to announce a couple of things in the interest of informational purposes regarding code of conduct during this public hearing. Today, the members of this standing committee are conducting a public hearing on the appointment of Mr. Jesus I. Sablon to serve as a member of the Commonwealth Election Commission to represent the island of Saipan. The public will be invited to make comments as to your support or not support the appointment before us this afternoon. However, any comments beyond the facts of the appointee or comments that are not directly related with this public hearing will not be entered in. Although we value your input, please abide with that rules. And I ask that you observe minimal noises in disrupting this hearing process. And please turn your electronic to silent mode. Thank you. Let us now begin. This public hearing is now in session. Today is 1:45 in the afternoon here at the Senate Chamber, Capitol Hill, Saipan. This is a public hearing regarding the appointment of Mr. Jesus I. Sablon by Governor Ralph de Longro Torres to serve as a member of the Commonwealth Election Commission to represent the island of Saipan pursuant to 1 CMC subsection 6102. Mr. Macaranas will be our clerk for this hearing. Mr. Agun, Will Agun will be our Sergeant-at-Arm. And Mr. Kamatsu will be our, will be in charge with the IT, social media. Mr. Jobo Mudis will be our legal counsel and will all serve accordingly for this public hearing. At this time, I would like to ask the clerk to please go to role.
Senator Francisco Q. Cruz.
Here.
Senator Victor B. Hokuk.
Present.
Senator Carl R. King Neighbors.
Present.
Senator Hustu Es. Kidugwa. Senator Vini F. Sablon.
Gaya.
Mr. Chairman, all members of the Senate EHI Committee are present.
With all members present, we have the necessary number to proceed with this public hearing. At this time, we like to ask for motion to the opposition.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor for the adoption of this public hearing's agenda and was seconded. Who in favor of that motion, say? Oppose, say? Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to ask Sergeant Arm, please escort the governor's rep into the chamber and the appointee, please. And before you introduce the appointee to the standing committee, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Jason Palacios. Buenas tardes and good morning, good afternoon, Chairman Cruz and the honourable members of this committee. On behalf of Governor Ralph de Longro Torres, I thank you for the opportunity to come and testify before you today. I am here to introduce governor's nominee for the Commission Commonwealth Election Commission, Mr. Jesus I. Sablon. Mr. Sablon is a respected government official with over 20 years of experience serving in the trust territory government as a clerk typist, accounting technician, and treasurer. In 1988, he retired from the SNI government and worked as the controller of Saipan Farmers Market from 1988 to 1991 and J.G. Sablon Rock Query from 1991 to 2004. Around the same time in his tenure with J.G. Sablon, he was a member of the Civil Service Commission from 1991, oh, I'm sorry, 1996 to 1999. From 2004 to 2008, he was in the consulting service business. And before his departure in 2008, he was a member of the Commonwealth Elections Commission in 2007, where he currently serves in that present day. Governor Torres places his full trust and confidence in Mr. Sablon to continue to serve in the Commonwealth Election Commission. I know he stands ready to answer your questions and present his plans for the future. His long history of professional experience, credentials, and commitment to serving the Commonwealth in this capacity makes him a viable candidate, and we kindly ask for your expeditious approval. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce him to this august body.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sablon. I'm sorry, Mr. Palacios. Mrs. Sablon, I know that you have submitted all required documents by this body. But if you have any, anything additional to the submission of those documents, you, you have the floor, but please state your name for the record before you proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of this committee. My presentation will be short and simple. My name is Jesus I. Sablon. I am presently the chairman of the CEC Board, which is, which is expiring on July 22, 2022. Members, I have not, nothing to say other than my 15 years of service, services speaks for itself. To be honest with you, I had decided to step down during the last CEC Board meeting, but I was asked by the other members and staff to reconsider, and I did. So here I am, ready to continue my service as a CEC Board for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sablon. And before I invite the members of the general public that are here in the gallery, first I would like to recognize those departments that are invited to participate. First on the list, the Honorable Mayor David M. Apetang, Mayor of Saipan. Any staff or representative that is here? No one? Let the record reflect that there's no one from the office of Mayor David M. Apetang. Mayor, Honorable Mayor Vicente Santos of the Northern Island. Anyone, representative from the Northern Island Mayor's Office? No one? Let the record reflect that there's no one from the Northern Island Mayor's Office. The 16 Saipan and Northern Island Municipal Council? Anyone? Any representative from that office? No one? Let the record reflect that there's no one from the 16 Saipan and Northern Islands Municipal Council. At this time, we'd like to invite the executive director of the Commonwealth Election Commission, Ms. Kayla S. Iguito. And ma'am, before you proceed, please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's on, right?
Sure, recess.
Sablon, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk, and I apologize again, the members of the general public that are listening, either at home or here at the gallery. At this time, we'd like to recognize the, to go ahead and proceed as executive director with your testimony. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Hafiday Dantiro, Chairman Cruz, and honorable members on executive appointment and government investigation. My name is Kayla S. Iguito, the executive director for the Commonwealth Election Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to provide my testimony in favor of the governor's, Governor Ralph de Longro Torres's renomination of Mr. Jesus I. Sablon to the Commonwealth Election Commission Board representing the 3rd Senatorial District, Saipan. I've had the honor and privilege to work with Mr. Sablon since my employment with CEC in 2008 to present. Mr. Sablon has been with the Election Commission for over 15 years and has been through 11 election, five of which he oversaw as a chairman. Mr. Sablon is experienced and knowledgeable in our election law and process, which has made him a great mentor and leader within our board and office. I've learned a lot under his tenure with CEC. And we look forward to continue working through the leadership and guidance of Mr. Sablon to uphold CEC's mission to ensure a fair, honest, orderly, and impartial election, most especially as we approach the upcoming 2022 general election this November. Thank you, Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Ms. Iguito. Any member of the Election Commission that is here? If, if, uh...
Good afternoon, honorable chair and committee of this body. My name is Robin Sablon. I'm the administrative officer for the Commonwealth Election Commission. I'm here in support of Chairman Sablon's nomination. It is very vital that we expedite the process with the election now fast approaching and petitions are coming in. We need to have a quorum to certify all those petitions. So again, I'm here in support of the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sablon. Anyone else from the Election Commission office that wishes to, uh... Anyone else? At this time, before I open the floor for any member of the general public that that is here in the gallery that wishes to deliver testimony, whether you're in support or not in support, you're welcome to come forward. And again, any comments that are brought that is not directly related with this public hearing will not be entered in, and such comment will be removed from the record. At this time, I open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishes to come forward? And before you proceed with your testimony, please state your name for the record. Public comment is now open. Anyone? In the gallery? Once we close public comment, we will not go back to public comment. So this is the opportunity to deliver testimony, whether you're in support or not in support. You're welcome to come forward. If no one? At this time, public comment is now closed. Now we'd like to ask the clerk to please recognize letters that are submitted.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Senate EHI Committee, Mr. Sablon, and members of the general public, in addition to the oral testimonies received today on the executive appointment of Mr. Jesus I. Sablon to serve as a member on the Commonwealth Election Commission, please be advised of one additional written testimony officially received in support of the appointee from Honorable David M. Apetang, Mayor of the Municipality of Saipan. At this time, no written testimony in opposition to the appointment of the appointee has been received by the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Macaranas. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the member to raise question or concern. I know that we have raised a lot of questions in Rota, and Mr. Sablon was there, so if the members wishes to continue raising questions or concern, uh... I appreciate from the members. At this time, I'd like to recognize from the 3rd Senatorial District, the island of Saipan, the floor leader of the Senate, Senator Vini Sablon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to all who are present here in the chamber joining us for this public hearing and to all that are watching on the media channels. Also, a warm welcome to the CEC Director and staff, and we also have our officials from the office of the governor, as well as our young ladies and lady and gentlemen back there who are a part of the Summer Youth Employment Program. And good afternoon, Mrs. Sablon. I, first, I want to thank you for accepting the renomination from the governor to continue your service and remain with the Commonwealth Election Commission. Mr. Chairman, last Friday in Rota, we sat to hear testimonies from one of the fellow board members, Ms. Esther Yatar, and at that time we did have an audience with Mr. Sablon and, as well as Mr. Robin Sablon back there. We had some lengthy discussions and question and answers, so with that, at this time, I'd like to yield my time back to you, Mr. Chairman, as all my answers, I, all my questions were answered during the Rota hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, floor leader from the island of Tinian, Senator Carl King Neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to everybody. Welcome, Mrs. Sablon, and also to the Director, Iguital, and members of the Election Commission. I, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions as of this moment. I also would like to echo the sentiments shared by the four leader. Thank you for dedicating so much of your time, volunteering so much of your time to the people of the SNI. In the efforts of ensuring the, the fair accounting of the ballots and providing fair elections to our people. And thank you for taking the opportunity up again with that. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Neighbors from the island of Saipan, the vice president of the Senate, Senator Hustu Kidugwa.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman, and Buenas, Mrs. Sablon. I understand that there were questions raised in Rota with you being present. So at this time, I would not like to repeat the same questions that were asked. However, I would like to extend my appreciation for your reconsideration to again serve the Election Commission. Your time with the Election Commission gives hope that your continuous presence will provide our people with the right to vote and fair election, which is another election coming up. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Thank you, Vice President Kidugwa from the island of Rota, the vice chairman of the standing committee, Senator Victor B. Hokuk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to the Commonwealth Election Commission families that are here to express continued support to the appointee, the governor's rep presenting the appointee, and to the Summer Youth Program ladies and gentlemen that are back there sitting to watch the ongoing process, legislative going on process in conducting this oversight investigation from an appointment made by the governor that the Senate will act whether he will be confirmed or rejected. So it's a good learning summer for you to look the work of a legislator, and maybe one of these days you'll be interested to becoming one in the future. So again, thank you for your interest to be here. To the harmony, there's no, nothing that I can elaborate or make questions as I've indicated in the Rota hearing that the, the hearing for Commissioner Yatar that I have included you, and I even make note that, Mr. Sablon, if you can assist the nominee, answer some of the committee's question, and this prob, this will serve you as your pre-hearing investigation hearing. So having participated in that particular hearing, you have provided the committee with all the, the areas of concern on the election process. I join my committee members in extending our appreciation for your reconsideration when at first you've decided not to continue your service to serve as an election commissioner. Your thought of reconsideration really place now confident in our election process for a fair and transparent election. Your experience in, in this board or commission have provided other commissioners the knowledge and, and guide them in the election procedures and process as in the new future, you will definitely conclude or decide your prior decision to retire from serving as a election commission. And I'm very confident that with your continued time to dedicate in the election commission, we'll ensure other commission to carry forward the experience that you have taught them, as well as to the employees that have watched and worked with you, worked with them in ensuring that we carry our election process impartially. And I am pretty sure that the concern raised on the island of Rota regarding all these absentees and qualification to be certified for a candidate are well answered. And I hope that a legislation forthcoming will definitely address the election commission concern to ensure for a more workable and transparent process when it comes every election year. So with this, Mr. Sablon, I have no question to ask you, but rather to extend again, and your family for your blessing also, to have you continue to serve as one of the election commission, and and thank you for your guidance to the young commissioners, as well as your guidance to all the staff working with the election commission. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to yield back to, to you without imposing any other question, as Mrs. Sablon have participated on the island of Rota, answering some of the questions that the committee have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And thank you again, Mrs. Sablon, for your interest in accepting such an important position in, in our government. Everyone shared a concern back in Rota, and and I believe there's no, no more question to be asked but rather to, for you to, to work with the, the sitting members and the executive director and staff in addressing public concern regards to ballots and voting rights. So I leave it up to you in working with them and I, I wish you the best. So with that, members, if no one else wishes to extend or raise comments or concern, I will proceed with the agenda. Thank you. All comments on, on today's public hearing are well taken. Let the record reflect that there, there are also written testimonies submitted from individual in support of the appointee before this committee and will be included in the Senate Standing Committee recommendation report along with oral testimonies to be forwarded before the full Senate members in consideration for confirmation or rejection. And before we adjourn, I would like to extend on behalf of the standing committee our appreciation and gratitude to Governor Torres' representative, Mr. Palacios, the appointee, Mr. Jesus I. Sablon, and most especially the members of the general public for your participation and involvement during this important public hearing process. And we certainly hope that we continue this dialogue of communication between us, the elected officials and the public to keep you abreast and informed of accurate and future Senate hearings ahead that relates to public best interest. This concludes this public hearing for today. Do I hear a motion for adjournment? There's a motion for adjournment and was seconded. All in favor of that motion say aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries. This public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.